So.
Have you been in the house?
No.
It is totally destroyed.
I'm sure.
You know, and.
I mean, there was, yeah.
You know.
It's too bad because right away it could have been.
We'll start recording.
So since we don't have Jeff TJ.
Yeah.
Jeff's not coming?
Well, I don't know.
He's in Maine.
He's in Maine. So we don't have Jeff, so you and I will just go back and forth.
Yeah, definitely. I guess I start off. Then it's you, then it's me, then it's you, then it's me, then it's you, and then it's all you.
Okay, recording. You had to go through all those, huh?
I had to.
It's my Kara, the tender.
It's up there. Are you going to win in the lobby or you can have a seat there?
Do you?
Oh, so it's.
Be on here and we list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we listed correctly? Yeah.
Yes, you are. It's really nice to meet you. Thank you for coming on. Welcome.
Thank you.
Um, so uh, we, we were just saying we don't have our third member tonight, so we're just gonna go back and forth. We have. So about six, no, five questions.
Okay.
Five questions to ask, so we'll just take turns asking questions and please let us know if you need any more information or have any questions for us.
And.
Where do you?
I'm reading the question here.
No, that's not the question.
That's not the question.
Uh-oh.
Where is the question?
Right here.
Oh. Well, that's the same thing.
Oh, yeah, but you're gonna use this so you can write on it.
Yeah, so. Kara, we need a motion to.
Open?
To open.
Meeting.
We open.
And.
Bang your.
We open.
I'm.
I was gonna say something, yeah, we're open.
And I have a motion to move to four days.
What you said. Second.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, now.
Let's start today. Okay. Um, welcome Lynn. So, okay, first question, let's just kick it right out. Uh, tell us how your career has progressed so far. What do you like about your career progression and how could it have been better?
Oh, wow, that's quite a few questions in one. Sorry, we asked once, I know it's. Um. I've had kind of an interesting career, um. But I, I took a part-time job uh. Ten years ago in Conway, um. Because I wanted a part-time job, my mother was getting older and I, it's hard to find part-time jobs.
Yeah.
And um. I really liked it and uh, you know, that's where I would like to finish off my career is in the municipality, working as an assistant or. A, a treasurer, tax collector. I like that capacity. I like working with the public. I like working in a small town.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's. It's a different atmosphere, um. I was not from a, a small town like Conway. I'm originally from Athol, which is up by the Quavon.
Mm-hmm.
Went to college at Western New England College and got my first job in the Springfield area and I've stayed, you know, in Western Mass ever since.
Mm-hmm.
So, um. No, I just really enjoy working with um, the residents, um, it's. It's kind of fun, the interaction that you get.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, whereas when you work for a large corporation in accounting. Uh, other than dealing with other accountants, you're basically dealing with just the auditors.
Sure.
Um. So.
Good. That's one. Yeah, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
TJ, your number two.
Oh, God. Uh, could you walk us through the collections process and the treasurer's uh, process that you're familiar with?
Sure, uh, the collections process, where do you wanna start? We're issuing the bills or?
Sure, that sounds good.
Okay, um. So for the property tax bills, you would uh, wait for the tax rate to be set by the state. Uh, then you would get some type of an import or a load from the assessor's office.
Okay.
And print the bills. Um, you either have quarterly or semi-annual. Send them out. The money would either come in by check or via Unipay or you could have a lockbox.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's posted. And then um, you turn over weekly from the tax collector to the treasurer.
Mm-hmm.
By Mass Municipal Law, um. Your turnover and then we reconcile monthly.
Excellent.
Um, as far as the treasurer's position, uh, there are other receipts that come in, although the bulk of the receipts tend to be your taxes. But you have large amounts that are ACH'd from the state.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you also would have turnovers from like the police department, highway department, et cetera.
Mm-hmm.
That gets posted through the treasurer's function.
Excellent, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I'm now an expert, but I have learned a little bit since listening to that throughout the years. Um, all right, please describe a time, um, there was a challenging issue with a fellow staff member or a taxpayer and how did you resolve that issue?
Um. Hmm. Well, there have been, I guess, some challenging issues on and off through the years with the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, sometimes people don't understand, um. A good example is the excise tax bills.
Mm-hmm.
If somebody gets a new vehicle at the end of a year, they'll get a prorated tax bill, let's say, November, December. And then a couple of months later, when the excise tax bills go out for the next year in February typically. The person may be confused, so the way to explain that is, um. If they're in person in your office, you can print out the two bills and show them the date of issuance and explain that it's a partial year for the prior year.
Mm-hmm.
And that the current year is January through December.
Okay.
And also, I typically advise them because they don't, I didn't know it until I went to work at a tax collector's office. That you can apply for an abatement for the vehicle that you traded in.
Oh, okay, I didn't know that.
You didn't know that?
No, yes. Good to know.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you.
So that you're not paying a double tax on the vehicle that you had and then the one that you have just acquired, you can get. Like two months of, let's say you bought the vehicle in November.
Yeah.
Well. The state is gonna, or the town, the state is gonna charge you for that month, but you would get the month of December back.
Oh.
So depending on the, the price of the bill, it's worth it or not.
Sure, yeah. Good job, thank you.
Yep.
What qualities are important for the treasurer collector to have to make them successful in a small town?
Um, I think you need to have um, empathy and relatability to the taxpayers. Um.
Absolutely.
You, you need to be a little, um. Be able to work with them to collect payment. You don't really wanna pursue anyone in tax title if you don't have to. Somebody's willing to be on a payment plan. Um, that's something that uh, we have done in Conway is, you know, um. We allow, you know, if somebody asks for easier budgeting for them, if they wanna pay their bill monthly, we'll do that. Um, and what we try to do is get them set up so that. They get caught up with their taxes, so they're not paying the interest and then you get them on a monthly payment, so they're always kind of. Ahead of it.
Sure.
So they're not really. Costing them more with the interest.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Um, please describe three specific accomplishments in your career that you consider to be the most significant.
Oh. Okay, um. What are the most significant? Well, I, I will just say, because this is a municipal job, I will say I was very pleased to pass the two exams for the treasurer and the tax collector. The treasurer exam I actually took during um, COVID, so that was a wonky.
Yeah.
Um. The other two things that I in, um, was proud of and enjoyed doing, uh, when I worked at Bay State uh, years ago in corporate accounting, I used to do the uh. Consolidated financial statements for the health system and um, there was a new um. Gatsby um, generally accepted accounting standards that came out that changed how nonprofits um, reported their financial statements. And uh, I had to roll that out to the other accountants at the other subsidiaries to show them how to um. Change their financial reporting and that was fun.
Sure.
Uh, it was. And um. Then the other thing, um. I would say is uh, I had a position at uh, Bay State as a management engineer and basically what that position did is you would go into departments. And look for efficiencies on how to do processes, so it was a different job than accounting. I prefer accounting, but. It was an interesting job and it was the first job that I went out and met with people instead of just sitting at a job or cranking numbers. So, when I went to um, New England Orthopedics. Um, I met with um. The dry cleaning service because they used to um. Rent the Johnnies to us.
Okay.
And when New England Orthopedics moved into the building on Bernie Ave in Springfield, they had different areas for hip replacement digits. Digits are your fingers and toes.
Mm-hmm.
And uh, instead of having every, everything put in a supply closet, I did a little um, management engineering study where I worked with the nurses. On each of, there were four different wards or floors to find out how many Johnnies they went through in that two-week period. And had them delivered to their areas because obviously your digits didn't need any Johnny's, they're looking at fingers and toes.
Okay.
So that was kind of fun.
Well, that's great.
Because again, you weren't, it wasn't just accounting.
Yeah, it was some problem solving, like, yeah. Um, excellent, so those are our questions for you. Um, our last is just, do you have any questions for us?
Um. Just, there's a little bit of confusion, I think, as far as this job was posted.
Okay.
I was thrilled when I saw the initial posting, nineteen and a half hours a week. And then it was pulled down and then it was put back up for thirty to forty.
Okay.
So I was kind of wondering what the, you're really looking for for hours, um. I had said in my initial interview, I'd be willing to work up to thirty.
Okay.
Thirty-two. I would prefer to work twenty-four, three days, eight hours.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but if. The work required it, I'd put in an extra day.
Uh-huh.
But um. You know, I have an elderly mother that lives in assisted living and, you know, that's why I want time. I, I like to spend my time with her that I'm not working, but I like to remain working just to. Do something challenging and interact with people.
Excellent, um, I'm gonna let Christopher answer that.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. So we initially posted the position based on recommendations from our current treasurer collector, Sarah Hunter.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we didn't get too many applicants, so we uh, reposted with slightly different hours, et cetera, just to see if we could maybe garner some more interest. Um, however, speaking with Sarah, she said we can definitely be flexible on the number of hours. Um, you know, there's another position within that department that the town could potentially hire for to fill in any gaps. Um, and after, you know, a training period for a candidate, it's possible we'll discover that, you know, we don't need that additional assistance. We'll have to see.
Okay.
But basically the answer is, you know, we can be flexible, I think, with the, the hours.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good, because I, I like to be busy, I like to work.
Sure.
But um, at this point in my life, I need flexibility.
Understandable, yeah.
We all.
So, um. But I'm very interested in the position. Um, I'm, I'm happy in Conway. I lived in uh, West Springfield for twenty-eight years. My husband and I. Sold our home. We were on a very busy street and working at home during the pandemic. It really.
Yeah.
Got to us, um, and we moved to Westfield and it has just made that commute to Conway, um. Difficult.
Yeah.
And when this position came up, I was like, oh my God, this would be wonderful.
Yeah, so. About like fifteen minutes from Westfield.
Yeah, um, well, fifteen to twenty, yes, I'm right on the line.
Three hundred.
Yeah. Yeah. By Southwick, so take the shortcut by Tukoa and.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure I'm here in fifteen minutes to Westfield.
Charlie and she's not here, okay, you're good, you're good. Excellent, well, thank you very much. Do you have any other questions for us before?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, excellent, well, thank you. You're welcome to stay or head out, whatever, it's up to you.
Um, I think I'll head out. Safe, have a good evening.
Okay, thanks. Today is the thirteenth. Uh-oh, I see George, that means there's trouble brewing. Uh-huh. June, come on down. So we have our second um, candidate for interview. I got, I'm gonna give these to you. All right. How are you?
Good.
Good. So, um, as you heard, we've got five questions for you and then we'll see if you have any questions for us.
Okay.
Um, we'll go back and forth.
Did you take notes?
Same setup.
No. No, because sometimes you don't always ask the same question.
That's funny. I know, we're not that creative today. Um, okay, so the first question I have is, um, tell us how your career has progressed so far. Um, what you like about that progression and how it could have been better?
Um, okay, well, I, I started working initially for the telephone company and I was a, an installation repair technician and. I became a manager and um, when my husband became ill, uh. I decided that there was an offer on the table. I didn't have enough time, but. With, with the offer, they, they kind of made it work, so um, I left uh, the telephone company. And uh, went to work for um, with my brothers in Texas at a, a restaurant and bar. And um, I, my husband didn't like it there, so we came back here. We were there for almost a year.
Okay.
And then um, I went to work for the Marriott and at the Marriott, I was um. A manager for three restaurants and uh, room service. Well, I should say three, it was actually. Two restaurants and a bar.
Huh.
And uh, and room service and um, while I was there, um. I got custody of my grandchildren and so I uh, went to work nights as the night auditor.
Mm-hmm.
And um. I enjoyed that very much, um, cause that brought me back into the accounting business.
Mm-hmm.
And, and then uh. But that was only a couple of, I, I actually ended up going, making it just a couple of nights a week and then I went to work for the Pelson's Gage Agency in Westfield.
Mm-hmm.
And there I did um, taxes, payroll, accounting, um, and. What, you know, whatever, whatever they needed as far as work was concerned. Um, the owner died and so I was already the elected collector here, so what I did is I. Uh, I, I stayed with the new owners for, for a little bit, but um, I wasn't, I wasn't happy and. It was more hours and I really wanted to work between town and, and there and so um, I resigned from there and, and came to work here pretty much. For a while, full-time because.
Mm-hmm.
The. The collections was in such a disaster.
Yeah.
So um, we got the, the collection part all cleaned up, um, got uh, the uh. Forensic accountant in.
Mm-hmm.
Got everything done there. And then um. I was, I was supposed to be reappointed and it didn't happen, so I started looking for other positions.
Mm-hmm.
I got a, I got, uh, I took the position in um, in Pelham where I am the treasurer collector.
Okay.
Have been for the last five years. And um, I'm very, I'm, I'm actually very happy there, the, the people are very nice, um. It's, it's um, a, a very nice little town.
Mm-hmm.
But it is a distance.
Yeah.
So, cause I live here in town.
Yeah.
So uh, I thought, you know, um. It would be nice to come back.
Sure.
Home, so to speak.
Sure.
Um, as far as my career, uh. My, it just has, everything has progressed very nicely, so it's. I'm, I'm very happy with, with things the way they are and.
Good. Excellent, thank you.
Can you walk us through the collection and treasurer processes?
Okay, uh, the uh. The collector basically receives the tax bills from the uh, assessors. Who um. Actually, after the tax rate has been set and then uh. You either get the bills printed or print them yourself, send them out, uh, you can do it either quarterly or semi-annually, depending upon how the town that you're in decides to do it. And um, and then after that, uh, you. Collect the taxes and uh, there are a number of different ways that I do it. Um, I have uh. Unipay, I have people who come in to the office and pay cash or check. Um, I also have uh. The uh. CoreLogic that does a lot of the, the escrow um, accounts.
Mm-hmm.
As well as there's, there's several other smaller ones uh, that do it as well. Uh, one is Loretta, the other is uh, InfoPro. And there's um, one called Black Knight that doesn't do a whole lot, but they do some, so then they send, they send the, the, the payments. To the collector's office, we pro, I, I process them.
Mm-hmm.
And then um. The, whatever, whatever is left over at the end of the. The half-year, um, I, I. Send out notices because I have, it, it's a, like, kind of like Blanford, it's, it's an elderly population.
Mm-hmm.
And quite often the uh, because it's, it's, it's a. Quarterly, a lot of them don't realize because we send only two bills a year. So uh, and, and not everybody, you know, everybody has their own way of doing it, but uh. That, there's quite a few of the elderly folks that haven't paid their bill, so I usually send them a very gentle reminder that. Your second quarter is due, you know, please. You know, make your payment and then um. Usually by that time, the, the, the new bills are ready to come out and so they go out. And um. Again, it's two bills in one.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, the, basically, uh, the exemptions are posted by the assessors, the uh, and abatements are posted by the assessors on a um. Um, after the bills go out, bec, unlike, I know here we used to do it uh. Before the bills went out.
Mm-hmm.
But they don't do that, so sometimes I actually end up having to send folks bills, you know, revised bills because they've gotten uh, either an exemption or an abatement. Um. But the, the, the whole idea was uh, to try and save money, you know, any, any way that the town could save money, so that's what we kind of try to do.
Mm-hmm.
Um, some people um. Are, are very happy with that system, some people don't like it, but. What you do is you just try to work with them and.
Sure.
And get that taken care of. Um, in, in um, um. As far as the, the, as far as the collections are concerned, once the collections are done at the end of the year, you look at whatever's left over and try to collect once again.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, with gentle reminders to begin with and then unfortunately you have to send a little bit sterner one.
Okay.
And then if they still don't respond, you advertise in the newspaper.
Mm-hmm.
And you put them into tax title. Um. Fortunately, I generally do not have to go that route. At the moment, I have two people in tax title and that's it. Um, most of the people, you send them gentle reminders and they're very good about.
Yeah.
Taking care of it, especially when you say your name's gonna appear in the newspaper.
Sure.
So, um. Or they always set up a payment plan. I do have um, a few people who are on payment plans because. It's not always possible.
Sure.
So I do have a couple that I have had to turn over to the treasurer, who is also me. And um, with those people, I also try to work with them. Um, in fact, I just worked with somebody where I collected uh. Four years of taxes from them, um. They did do it in a lump sum and I told them, you know, we could do it in, you know, in a payment plan, but she said no, she wanted to do it all at once. So I do give people the option.
Mm-hmm.
And um. You know, it, it, it just, you, you, you try to work with the, with the taxpayers any way you can. In addition to handling the tax title accounts, um, the treasurer also handles all the incoming uh, funds from like the um. The fire department, the police department, the council on aging, um. Our historical uh, society also has some things that they, that they turn over to me as well, the highway department. Uh, they, they all have uh, little things that they turn over. Um, I get those all posted, everything gets turned over. Uh, basically weekly.
Mm-hmm.
To the accountant, um, and daily they go into uh, the bank. Whether they're, if, if they're um. If they're checks, I have a check cashing. Machine and I just put it through the check cashing machine, so that, that gets done immediately. Uh, cash, I do have to actually take to the bank and uh, while I, I was told by the um. The select board, they didn't care if I'm, if I held on to money for a while, I don't like to do that. I have a. I have a safe, it's unbelievable. So people couldn't really get into it, but I generally try to get that in the same day.
Mm-hmm.
So, and then do my turnovers on a weekly basis and reconcile with my accountant monthly. Um, and the same thing with, with any of the um, the other departments that give me cash or whatever.
Yeah.
Um, and, and um, I sign all the checks and send and pay all the bills, you know, via that, that check. That I sign.
Mm-hmm.
And that's pretty much what. The treasurer does.
Yeah, that's a lot.
Oh, well, why, and I, it's not really part of the treasurer's job, but because I handle the payroll.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, almost completely, um. I, I, I also am the human resources director as well.
Wow.
Because.
Yeah.
Um. Because I handle payroll and most of the, the things that we have, most of the issues we have have to do with payroll.
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Okay, excellent, thank you very much. Um, this one's mine. Please describe a time there was a challenging issue with a fellow staff member or taxpayer. And what did you do to resolve the issue?
Uh, one of my tax title people, um. We, we, they had been in tax title for like six years and at that point, we decided. Uh, after I talked with the um. With the assessors and my accountant and I said, um. What do we wanna do with this person? You know, I didn't wanna do it all on my own because he owed us over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, he had a very expensive house. And he hadn't paid any taxes. At all. In six years.
No.
Nothing. Not even. Not even the initial tax payment.
Yeah.
Which was. Really strange.
Yeah.
Anyway, um, he was in tax title. We had tried to contact him, uh, I should say, I tried to contact him, though the person before me had also tried to contact him.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, and, and get him to pay. And he never, he never did anything. So, finally after six years, we just, we decided, the uh. Tax title attorney and I decided that we were going to, because he had already been, he'd already had a hearing, he'd already been in, in uh, land court for quite a while. Uh, we decided we were going to foreclose on him.
Mm-hmm.
We sent him notification that he could appear in land court and plead his case. He didn't show up.
Mm-hmm.
So, ha, the land court foreclosed on him. Which meant that I then had to um, take and. Evict him. Because he no longer owned his house.
Mm-hmm.
The town owned it. So anyway, once he got the eviction notice. All of a sudden, he decided he was going to come up to town and. He didn't come and talk to me, he wanted to talk to the board of selectmen.
Yeah.
So uh, when, when the, when the board was notified of that, I actually, they actually asked me to go in and. Uh, listen and see what he had to say and see i-if. You know, what, what possible solutions we could have this problem. So anyway, uh, what he wanted to do is, he wanted to, um, he was trying to sell his house because he wanted to move to Tennessee, so he said to the, the board of selectmen, he says. Well, well, can't you just, you know, let it go and, and, you know. That, when, when I sell the house, we'll, we'll give you the money? Well. Unfortunately, because he was foreclosed on, we had to set up some kind of either payment plan.
Yeah.
Or some kind of something and so what I did is I sat down with him and his attorney. And my attorney uh, from, for the tax title and we came up with a plan that was suitable for everybody. We reversed his foreclosure.
Mm-hmm.
And he. Was, he, he was to pay a down payment. And then every month make payments and he was told that if any of the payments weren't made. Then what would happen is the foreclosure would then be reinstituted.
Mm-hmm.
So fortunately he did, it took him two and a half years. And he finally sold the house and at that point we got the remainder of the money. He was on a three-year payment plan, so he was, he was almost at the end of the, the po, the point where. He would have to pay. Oh, the other thing that we actually had him do was he had to keep his current taxes current.
Oh, yeah.
So he did both of those things and um, so. Uh, it all worked out well. He um. He went, he moved to Tennessee, we got our tax money and everybody was happy.
Good. That's, that's good.
He wasn't happy to begin with.
I'm sure not.
We're always happy with happy endings.
Yes. You're up with number.
I'm up with number five.
Number four.
Number four.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh. That's how, I'm so poor, can't even afford to pay attention. What qualities are important for the uh, treasurer collector? To have and would make them successful in a small town?
Okay, well, one of the things is you have to, you have to listen to your tax, you know, your taxpayers. You have, you have to, and you have to be able to work with them. And I have quite a few people that I do have to work with. And um, what you do is uh, you, you know, you listen to their story. You let them tell you what their problems are. Uh, with COVID, unfortunately, we had some people who lost their jobs. So consequently, we had to, you know, work extra hard with them. We also have, as I said, we have a, an elderly population and some of our elderly people have had, um, problems paying their taxes as well. So what we've done with them is um, we've, we've used the deferred tax uh, plan that we can, we can do with, with them. Because they, they fit into that, which means that they don't have to pay their taxes. Um, however, when they do either pass away or they sell their property, the town then gets paid back for the taxes that they haven't paid. And the nice thing about it is, is that instead of being sixteen percent like tax title, uh, it's only eight percent that they end up paying. So their families in a lot of cases can actually afford to pay the back taxes and keep the property. Some of them don't want to, some of them just say, okay, um, you know, you do whatever you need to do, uh, we're going to try to sell it. And, and we'll pay the taxes when we sell. So, you know, you just, you just have to kind of work with them. And that's, I mean, that's really the important thing is you have to, you have to be able to listen, you have to have empathy. You have to be um, you know, work with whatever, whatever they can do. Some people, you know, can't, I mean, there, there are all kinds of rules and regulations that you're supposed to follow. But if you're actually getting payments, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt to, you know, give, bend over a little bit to try and get, you know, somebody back on track.
Good. Um, next one, this is our last question for you. Um, please describe three specific accomplishments in your career that you consider to be the most significant.
Okay, well, one of the, one of the accomplishments was when um, I got the forensic accountant in here and we were able to, show that there was a problem. And we got most of the money back, which was also good between the, the, the bond and the Bank of America where, she had taken money from um, uh, by paying her own taxes. Um, and I, I don't know if she ever did end up um, actually paying back the restitution. I certainly hope she did.
Believe so. I think it was small.
I mean, it was a small amount because that was, that was the difference between what we had collected and what, you know, from the, from the uh, bond and the um, um, the bank. And there was just a small amount left, so that's why they agreed to do it that way. However, I don't think she realized that the bond company was going to go after her for what they paid us.
Yeah. Oh, boy.
Which I'm sure didn't,
Yeah.
didn't like sit too well, but hey, it's the way it is. Um, but just getting that done was, was a big accomplishment. Um, and then um, well, that, the, the issue with the tax title was, that was also a big accomplishment because that was something that, um, everybody said, oh, you're never, he's never going to pay, he's never going to pay, but he did, he paid everything. The way I had it structured and worked out with him, he paid every cent,
Yeah.
that he was supposed to pay. Um, and, and, and that was very, you know, very good. Um, we also had a tax title sale. Um, where we had a piece of property that was, it was actually um, condemned. It had had a leak, an oil leak in the basement. And um, the taxes that were owed were like fifty thousand dollars on, on, on that particular piece of property. Because it happened during the time that the, the, the current owner had been in the building. And they just couldn't afford to, to keep it going, so they, they just, they just kind of abandoned it. So what we did is we had the, we had the sale and we actually, we figured maybe we might get five or ten thousand dollars for it. We actually ended up getting forty thou- four thousand dollars, forty thousand dollars for it. And we had somebody who turned it into a community garden.
That was nice.
Which was, which was very, very nice. So that was, that was a big accomplishment.
Excellent. Good. Um, so our last question is, do you have any questions for us?
Um, well, like the person who was giving, I, I kind of had, had questions about, uh, I mean, you, you, you had mentioned something about a training period and whatnot. Um, I, I don't know, you know, what kind of a training period, because I am already a treasurer collector. How much, you know, how much training y- you're planning to do? Uh, obviously, you have a different system than what I'm used to at the moment. Um, so um, just kind of wondering, you know, about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we posted the position, we mentioned there, I believe, uh, up to a year of, of training to become the actual treasurer collector. Um, you know, it, it really is dependent on the candidate. Uh, they'll be working with Sarah Hunter, who you know, is a treasurer collector now. Um, and so based off of that, um, you know, we'll see what the timetable is. But certainly, um, you know, we're approaching this as if uh, we could have somebody potentially in place, uh, as a treasurer collector at the start of FY twenty-four. Um, so that's what we're thinking, but again, it's kind of dependent on the candidate that we end up choosing.
Okay. Uh, that was really the, the, the big thing is, is, you know, what, what you, you know, what you were looking at as far as timelines and, and, you know, whatnot. And, and uh, what, what is the system that is currently being used?
You mean in terms of software?
Yeah, collection, uh, and, and probably also the, um, I mean, at the time, at the time I was here, we were using software for everything.
Yeah.
Is, I still using software?
Yeah, we're using software, yeah.
Okay, and I use software in, in uh, Palom when I went there. Uh, we did, when we couldn't get the uh, collections part to that, and all we could get was just, uh, we already had the treasurer's part, uh, and the accountants. What we did is we looked um, at other softwares as well. Um, so we went, we went with Vadar and I'd worked with both of them and both of them have their, their good points and their bad points. Um, um, either one is, is fine, you know, they, they both, they both do the job.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank you very much, June. If you have no more questions for us, you're welcome to stay or, or leave, whatever. Is here, so it's bound to be a show.
That's okay.
All right.
I, I, uh, I actually have something I have to take care of. No worries, which I, I normally don't have to do, but I do have something that I do.
Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
All right, I'm required to do math. It's gonna take him, I'm gonna need to set that aside. Um, okay, so we're gonna go back to, do we want to start back at the top? Or do we wanna, um, let's let people who are here? Okay.
Margaret is the only one that um, isn't.
On the agenda?
Rains here, but I think he'll be part of Dave's discussion. So I think Margaret's here.
Dave's like, I didn't invite him. Margaret, come on down.
I have a motion.
Motion to go back to, oh, actually, it's to uh, Department Reports Council on Aging. A second?
Second.
All favor I.
Me.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Long time no see.
I know.
I know.
Um, I guess their meetings now are on a basis.
I hear you're, you're looking for new members for Council on Aging. Um, need a couple more?
Just, you know.
Volunteers.
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 Yeah, we don't need anybody else on the.
No members, just volunteers. Okay.
Yeah, um, the reason I'm here is Pat and I've been talking about um, CPR training.
Okay.
And um, I think it's important, we have a good group of volunteer drivers now.
Okay.
They're all Cory checked, but I feel it's important for CPR training as well.
Okay.
And um, Pat was talking about it, he knows somebody that does this training. If we can get, I think, a minimum of ten, it would be seventy-five dollars a person rather than the eighty-five.
Okay.
Um, the council on aging, I have five people.
Okay.
That will be taking it, including Heidi, who teaches the exercise. And um, the other four would be drivers. The council on aging would pay for it out of their state formula grant money.
Oh, great.
Um, the fire department said they have money for five that um, he feels is very important for them to take it. Or actually, it's mandatory that they take.
Okay.
So the fire department would pay for theirs. But Pat and I have been talking about it and uh, we feel it's probably important with everything that's happened lately. For at least one or two people, in a supervisory position at the town hall.
Absolutely.
Here, say at least ninety percent of the time.
Okay.
Um, maybe the town clerk for like, when she's here for voting. Um, the library, at least one.
I was gonna say library, yeah. I love it. I was just gonna say, maybe we can open it up to other boards, but I think that's a great thing, the better, yeah.
Yeah, all departments up here should have somebody. Um, Christopher lives here, so.
Are you certified?
I'm not, yeah.
Um, highway department.
You got two fire, oh, good, so you're partially.
Yeah.
I'm certified, I just, I just got my, yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, so.
Yes, I agree, it's very important.
Um, this gentleman's gonna be doing it, it's American Heart Association.
Okay.
CPR certification.
Do they do, do you know if it's the AED training as well?
They do, um, he doesn't feel that we really need that part of it.
Okay.
Because we're using a circle for when we're transporting. Marty, can you move down in front of that speaker, please? No. Hi, Mary.
Um, okay, that would, that would be my only question, just because I know that we've had issues with our AED here. But we were just talking about it the other day about how it would be awesome to open it up to town members too, to be able to, get the more people from town certified, the better.
Exactly, I think. Yeah, so I mean, I don't know how other departments would pay for it if it's a town thing. Like I said, uh, COA would be covered, fire department's covered.
So, so there's a, I mean, we actually just got a wellness grant from Maya, our insurers. Um, and you know, so we got it initially just for the healthy food snacks that you see. So we got that. They immediately came back and said, hey, there's still a bunch more money.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to do, so I'm happy to reach out to them and see if this is something they may recover.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That would be great, and the more the better, because I mean, if we want to reach out to, to all the departments and say if anyone's interested, and then if we can fund it, then, you know.
Yeah.
Now, how big can his class be? Is it a minimum of ten or?
It's a minimum of ten to um, only pay seventy-five versus eighty-five.
So he on that, maybe twenty?
Um, he probably can handle up to twenty at least, because Pat said, you know, we could have, like the group that, like the fire department that would have the AED training and everything, that could be in the auditorium. Our group could be in our COA room.
So, and if we were able to receive grant funds, we could even do a couple classes.
Yeah.
You said it was seventy-five per person?
Yes.
Cool. That's awesome, yeah. I love it.
Yeah, so I don't know if you guys want to wait until you find out about grant monies or if you want to,
Well, if there's.
reach out to other departments to kind of push.
Yeah, I think if we reach out and see the interest from other departments and then, you know, if there's some funding already that we have, you know, so we know we can at least do COA and fire. And then whatever else we get, we can, yeah, increase that.
I don't think the cemetery department's one of the.
We don't want to try to save somebody. This is just an endless pile of cemetery jokes. Just start up. Yes, I love it.
Yeah, so I, yeah, I think it'd be great. Um, Pat and I have been talking about it for a couple months now. And um, he said, well, we gotta have at least ten, so we can get the cost down a little bit. And he said, and the more the merrier, really.
They also do like a, a babysitter training class for young kids for um, working with like infants and kids. I would love to be able to offer in Blanford for like, if we were able to get some sort of a grant or a small fee for anyone. You know, reaching out to Chester, getting anyone interested teens.
Yeah, because, you know, like Pat said, and he said, you know, this'll be, this'll look good for us.
Absolutely.
You know, you've got, we've got the council on aging who transports people around and their drivers are CPR trained, their exercise. I mean, Heidi is already, but hers is running out.
Yeah.
So she will do it for us now, so.
Sounds great.
Okay.
You always want something from us.
I know, but I'm not asking for money.
I guess.
Oh, my God. Okay.
Wait, I gotta give you a hug before you leave. I got, you'll last day, sorry. Good to see you, Margaret.
You too.
You want to hug too, GJ?
I'm good, thank you.
All right. Oh, all right, thanks. Let's go to Dave. Do we see the, the highway report? Sure, I have to, though we can't adjourn it, because I post name.
Which one were you not at? I forget.
The ninth.
The ninth. Okay, so.
So, uh, motion to approve meeting minutes of December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two is written.
For move.
Uh, on favor?
I.
I. I know, we'll table the next one. Come on down, Dave.
We don't have anything.
You don't have anything?
No.
Right.
You've got a letter of commendation here for, for you.
Do we really?
Yeah. Don't you look at your paperwork? I've gotta do everything.
No, I have, oh, you know why? Because it's not via email.
It's from the Gateway Regional School District.
Okay, let me read that aloud. Appreciation for Dave. That's the title of it. Dear Miss Lieutenant, Mr. Cousin, Mr. Allen, I'm writing to you to commend Highway Superintendent Dave Waldron's hard work, and consistent communication with Gateway Regional School District. After a particularly tricky wintery weather week, I was especially compelled to reach out to share my appreciation for Dave's diligence and attention. Calling snow days is probably one of the most public aspects of my job as superintendent. Given the large geographic footprint of our district and wide range in elevations, it is very stressful to make the right call to ensure that students and staff are not on the roads during hazardous driving conditions, but also to keep a consistent schedule, where students can be in school as much as possible for their continuous growth. I am also acutely aware that a school delay, early release, release or cancelization, oh, cancellation, is difficult for many families who have jobs and responsibilities during their child's school day. Because of this, I consistently reach out to Dave to get his perspective on the road conditions and anticipate a challenge. He is always prompt in his response, even at four AM or ten PM at night, and provides me with thoughtful feedback to consider. I am so thankful for his partnership, it has helped me to understand that the right call is to keep the students and staff in our community safe. I have been continuously impressed by the community at large. After taking this role last year, it is reassuring to know that we have people who genuinely care and who are willing to work together in the different positions within our towns. I felt it was important to show this information with the leaders of your community. Who knows? Thank you, Dave. That's a very nice letter. That I already read before.
Jade reading, I can tell you that.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, you got nothing for us? No?
Nope.
Okay. Rainy, you got stuff?
Well, I, I really wanted to address the board.
I'm down.
But uh, you're, you're missing one.
Yeah, he's in Maine, he's stopped living the life.
No, actually, and I understand because if I sit, I run at the mouth, you know that.
All right. Too comfortable.
My reason wanting to address the board was, I wanted to wait till North Plafer Road was completely done.
Okay.
All right, uh, yes, there's always more to do, but uh, one of the things on that was, when we started, um, there was a lot of personal differences then. Um, unfortunately, you weren't even here. So it was primarily me and Josh.
Yep.
Um, we had applied for that two times.
Yeah.
And during that, the price escalation went nuts.
Yeah.
Um, so what I wanted to say was, one, um, I thank Dave, because I, I believe he did a, a fantastic job. Uh, he was not in the beginning of it. And so it's, it's really hard for any superintendent walk in. And so it's, it's really hard for any superintendent to walk in and put himself in the frame of mind of somebody who developed a project. That's not there, and the pricing and everything else had changed so much. Um, yes, we did have a lot of communication, I've been there many times, uh, a couple times, I said, what are you thinking? But he explained things to me, and it's a definitely different thought process, but the outcome was right, um. And again, it was a, a difficult situation for any gentleman to create that length of a road. And those four major different processes, because I spent lots of time with the state engineers and the uh. Oh, yeah, the uh, yeah, the equipment manufacturers and then the uh, product developers as far as the asphalt, the slurry seal and all this. Um, to get all the specifications in and, and get it to be approved by the state, which we did get the grant, which. I'm very happy for the town, I was very happy for that to have been gotten, because. Me and Josh worked a lot on it, received it, um, but I, I just wanted to say that, I wanted to say thank you for the town. Allowing me to be a part of finishing it.
Yeah, thank you for your help.
But I was also saying, I wanted to give a personal thanks to Dave. For, I think, accomplishing a difficult job, and I think he did a very, very good job.
He's not gonna be able to fit his giant head out of this.
This is the one thing, you know, and he didn't pay me that much to say that. So, but no, I, again, I, I wanted to wait sure until it was all done.
Yeah.
Uh, I think I talked to you for last week.
Yeah.
And we were, it was finalized then.
Great.
And I said, well, I just wanted to come in and say thank you, because it's, it's easy just to walk away from something like that.
Yeah.
And not, I mean, in all honesty.
Yeah.
Everybody, I could sit here for a whole day. To start to explain my thought processes and how I developed this project, and how we. Worded things with Josh and me to get this through.
Yeah.
And for him to pick up on all of that, and of course, you had a lot to do with it in the end here too, um. It, it's a difficult situation, it's, it would have been much easier if he would have started this project.
Yeah.
And been done on his own.
Yeah.
And I just wanted to acknowledge.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
I appreciate him doing that.
That's helpful to get feedback.
And we appreciate you stepping to the plate to help get that started.
Yes, I probably should.
But again, I don't know, I'm telling you what Dave said about you, but.
But again, I wanted to say thank you to the board.
Yeah, thank you.
Because that's gonna be.
That was a big, yeah, that was a big project.
Uh, and typically that type of situation, you do in pieces.
Yep.
And by the time you get to the end. Getting again, so.
And now it's one less thing George can complain about.
And, and, and again.
For now, today.
Yeah, he stepped into that, um, he stepped into the job and into that.
Yeah.
And into winter.
It's a lot all at once.
Then you again.
Thank you. Alright, George, you wanna come on down?
Thank you.
What do you got for us? You got a whole list?
I have a list.
Oh, boy.
Sorts and things.
Oh, goodie.
Don't you know we have enough lists around here?
I know, I know. First of all.
Yeah.
Gotta increase the uh, speed limit on North Plafer Road, signs still say thirty miles an hour. It's easily sixty miles an hour at most places.
Oh.
So.
No, thank you.
Think about that.
Okay.
And, and as, and aside, and aside to TJ, um, you might be aware that there's a number of catastrophes when people attend grave. Services for people where other seniors pass out or fall over or die because of the stress of the burial. So you may want to, so maybe you need to have some of your staff trained in CPR, I certainly would encourage that.
Staff members aren't there when we do the.
Well.
He's talking like lawn, lawn.
Can I address one of your concerns that you brought up?
No, wait, let him do his list first.
Alright.
Okay, my, my main, my main issue for being here tonight is picking up on what Pat did several years ago. Out in the yard back here in terms of spreading mulch, spreading mulch. Um, you were successful in bringing together.
Oh, the tires?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You were, you were successful in bringing together a great many town folk to pitch in and get a project done. And I don't think there's been another one since. And there are numerous things around town that we all see every day that could be improved on with volunteer help, that we don't have the money in the budget probably to do, to pay to do.
Like an Earth Day one, maybe something coming up?
An Earth Day, my thought is that. Um, the fundamental issue here in town is we don't have enough people volunteering or getting involved in town government or other things.
It's terrible.
And people don't know each other, I mean, I gotta admit, I don't know. Half the families live on Blair Road, and Blair Road's three miles far, there's like eight families on it.
Too, I don't know all the people.
People don't know, haven't had a chance to socialize and get together and, and accomplish things and feel part of the community. And what I'm suggesting is that maybe it's the recreation committee, maybe it's another committee that's formed to do this. But I'd like to see a committee come together and then. Put out through publicity requests for people to identify projects in the community, to make it. Whether it's cleaning up the park over here, or whether it's putting some uh, trees up around the sign at the transfer station and dressing that up a little bit. But to choose four pro, they could suggestions from the community, and whatever committee that is established would choose like four projects for the summer. And when the weather starts getting nice, they could prepare for these projects by identifying what equipment they needed and what the. What they need to put together, and do it on a Saturday morning from maybe nine thirty to noon, and, and then at noon time. Have a cookout right out here, um, where we have hot dogs, hamburgers, maybe ice cream for the kids or whatever.
Yeah.
And the people could identify with one of these projects and sign up for it and. Come and be, people would facilitate, committee would facilitate the people getting to know each other and introducing people.
Yeah.
So it'd be the party host kind of thing, um, because I think we need to get people together, we need to have introductions, we need to have. Ways of uh, becoming more comfortable with our fellow citizens in town. And I think that hopefully would stimulate people to get involved in other activities in downtown government and other things.
We need fire department members.
Department, you name it, I don't know if there's any department that can't use some volunteer help.
Yep.
So, that's, that's my big issue that, and I asked the select board to. Establish a committee to do it, I'd be glad to volunteer to serve on it and work with it, and. I have some ideas of how you can implement it from other things I've been involved in in the past, and.
Okay.
And um, I think it'd be a good thing, but I would like to see it done before April. Um, so that by April, things are in gear to identify four projects, spread them out, maybe May, June. July and August or something like that, or maybe September, um, so that you, you have the dates far enough in advance, you have the projects identified, you have the resources. Plan for and things like that, and then we just promote it like crazy and get people involved and.
Yeah. I've been trying for years to get people involved.
Yeah, I, it's, but your, your, your project a few years ago was, and I.
Well, honestly, I don't remember.
Was a huge turnout, and, and I think, and what I noticed most is people enjoyed.
Yes, they did.
Participate.
It was fun.
I mean, they, they sort of picked out their little piece of the action, and they jumped in and they did it, and I think that's what we need to get going.
Yeah.
And, and we gotta find ways to do it.
I agree.
And so that's, that's my one main thing to come to. Um, the other things are more housekeeping things, um, why are the flags at half mast in, in Blanford, no place else?
You know, Christopher?
Check what our last half mast.
Luther King Day.
No, 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 there's, there was something in between.
There's no other city in town in Massachusetts that I know of that has flags at half mast.
Um, well, I can, I can certainly check what the latest one is. It, it, because the number of officials that they lowered to half mast for has grown quite a bit. It's, it's not, I'm not always fully aware, because Doug, our groundskeeper, just. Those notifications.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I will, I'm happy to.
Well, that's because Doug takes care of it, so Doug gets the emails from the state or wherever, and then he lowers it, so he would be the guy.
Is it, isn't he aware that just, you know, he goes to Westfield, notices the flags are at half mast or anything like that? Okay, anyway, that's, you know, it doesn't. Why have it half mast if nobody knows about it? You know, nothing's in the Country Journal about it, nothing, you know, why is Blanford the only town that has a half mast? The other thing is, right in front of the town offices, we have one of the shabbiest. American flags hanging out there that you could imagine.
And, and George, I, I agree, and, and Joanne and I were just talking about it, so initially, we were hoping to kind of hold off on replacing all the town flags until the spring. Given that bill. Definitely undergo further wear and tear in the winter, but we agree, I mean, that one is in really terrible shape now. Um, so we're gonna be working with Doug and get a new one up there.
I think, I think it's a matter of pride that all the flags are maintained, and we don't say, well, we can let our shabby flag fly for six more weeks. Till spring comes and I'll.
David was good enough to have the highway department take down the remaining flags that were on the poles going through town. Up North Plafer Road and.
Yeah, they, they were getting.
And uh, uh, I collected them from the highway department, they're up here on the stage right now. And there's a number of them that have to be replaced, and I think we'll have to do an inventory to get what.
Where are they?
They're on the stage. On the right hand side, when you go up the stairs against that wall on the right hand side.
We're collecting, we got a bunch from Doug's house, and um, sorry, could you tell me her name that fixes?
Oh, God, Kay Fletcher.
Kay Fletcher, she came in with a bunch that she repaired, and we bought some new ones, they're all locked in his closet now, so.
Okay, and along the poles, they're on the stage except for the few that I brought in earlier.
Thank you.
And uh, but we, we were hoping, I don't know, uh. Memorial Day, uh, we were hoping to do a flag burning.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and we were hoping to get them wearing for, or one of the other. Uh, agencies to come up and do the uh, ceremony for the burning of the flags. And I have a collection of flags down at the cemetery that need to be burned. And uh, we were late, usually Patriot's Day, all American flags in the cemeteries. And that are displayed on the streets, it's supposed to come down except for those in front of the public buildings. And uh, we were late in doing that, and we finally got that part done. Now we have to inspect the larger flags that need to be replaced. And like you said, you already picked up some?
Yep.
And then going forward. I'm trying to get Jimmy Martin involved, he's a veteran, and Doug. And see if we can get. A group up here, not to do the flag bearing ceremony at the Memorial Day uh, parade thing, but at the picnic after. I think it would be uh, very educational for our youth to see the respect that the military holds for their. Flag. And uh, this is something that I've been trying to get going for a couple of years, hopefully, maybe this year we'll get it done.
Okay, good.
We have a flag.
Item is the. Uh, bicentennial park, um, there are two benches in the park, both of them have been damaged. Um, the need repair, and there's last year's leaves have never been cleaned up in the park. Is there a plan, do you have in place a maintenance crew, what department is responsible for the maintenance of that park?
Yeah, so we, we hired, um, uh, Kristen.
Thomas.
Thomas, thank you, yeah, Kristen Thomas, um. Up taking root landscape design, so she's taking care of Watson Park and also bicentennial park. Part of her contract is, once spring comes, she will do kind of a reopening of the park, clean out any leaves, et cetera. Um, and get it spruced up for spring.
So, she do leaves on the brick though, or is she just doing leaves out of the beds?
There's no leaves on the beds, they're all on the brick now, they're pouring off the bed.
Yeah, I, I can check, but I mean, certainly we can ask if, you know, she can.
Yeah, she also did a great job cleaning up all around where the flower gardens were. And she did an excellent job cleaning that out in the fall.
But, yeah, we, I don't see any reason that we have to wait till April to have the leaves picked up in the bicentennial park. Or to have the, have the benches repaired.
We can, we can talk to Doug about just breaking them up, um, that's, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, break them up, sweep up the brick, clean it up a little bit, because again, people are walking through town and, and you wanna be proud of the way the town looks.
Question to him?
Yeah, Marty just asked me Friday when we were having lunch, and um, does Doug not break? The leaves anymore, cuz she said he used to get them all at the back of the building? And it's just all, all leaves everywhere, so I don't know, I wasn't aware of that.
I know that we have, but we do a spring cleanup. So come April, we will do a cleanup, if we don't do a cleanup right now, it's too soggy and wet, and it'll just destroy the, yeah.
Now, just for. The benefit of my lost of thought here, uh, from the roadway going up the hill, that's the part. From the roadway coming down to the building, that's part of the, okay. I, we were talking about it the other day, Bob and I, and I thought that's how it went, but I was not sure.
Yeah, we don't typically do a cleanup, George, until spring. So.
Is it, I mean, the, the, the weather conditions are changing, we don't, you know, cool for the snow.
But we don't really budget enough to do like, we don't, in our plans, don't have a budget to do leaf cleanup in the middle of winter, I mean, it's February.
It should have been done in the fall, and it wasn't.
Yeah. So, it's, you know, it's definitely not, you know, that budget, that line item is always one that's, that is pretty close. So I wouldn't say that we could necessarily afford to do an extra cleanup right now, um. I mean, we can, we can take a look into it, but I wouldn't say it's like a, a top priority for that.
That's, it could be a great project for your.
There you go.
It, it certainly could, but it also, you know, again, it, it, it's the town's face. And you have the face looking pretty sloppy, it's a shame to have the town that, you know, we wanna be proud of. Looking the way it ducks, and you know, whether it's the flag out front or these things are ongoing maintenance issues that need to be. Somebody needs to take responsibility for us, the point. Yeah, that's my main issue.
Alright, what else you got for us?
Okay. Um, my pet peeve again is the fact that I don't think you folks are watching your YouTube presentations. Because if you would, you'd probably scream, um, the quality of them is really poor. Um, somebody will say something and you can't hear them, or somebody, that mic there will not pick up TJ. Or if there are the other segments here, it won't pick up Jeff, um, there needs to be three mics on the table. And there needs to be a valvular mic for the administrator, and there needs to work the one over here. So that when the people talk, you can pick up what they say and not sit there and say, what is it, what is it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, they're just, it's just a shame that it's, you spend the money and you, you put them out there, and anybody who watches them has a negative effect. It's, you know, again, it's the face of the community, and it's a shame, it's, it's not being maintained.
Think that my comical comments are not being heard.
Well, not only are they not being heard, but your words of wisdom aren't being heard either.
Alright, you got any other pet peeves?
Um, yeah, I have a few, um, question.
We're gonna speed it up.
Yeah, we have a white truck, it's parked, usually parked out front, looks brand new.
Yep.
Who's responsible for that vehicle?
Town hall.
What do they use it for?
Town businesses, it gets signed out when.
If my cemetery crew needs to use a truck to get out to the cemeteries, that's the one they use. If we need to go to Boston or to meetings. That's the vehicle we use instead of paying out gas money and for personal use of the vehicle. That's what that was purchased for.
Okay, our, our custodian, John Hoppy, uses that to make dump runs. It's a huge part of it.
So, it's available to any department in town to use for business.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yeah, obviously, obviously. Um, question about finances. According to the town bylaws, all the town. Departments, I use that in general terms, are supposed to be submitting preliminary budgets to. The finance committee and to the town accountant by February fifteenth. Once they're turned into the town accountant, are they available to the public to see?
Yeah, so George, so we're, we've just got a few departments left that haven't submitted their budget request for FY twenty-four yet. Um, so they're scheduled for next week. Um, once we get those, you know, I'll compile them into one spreadsheet and I'll I'll make it available in my newsletter so people can take a look at everyone's requests. Um, but you know, that's, we're we're running a little bit behind just because we had to reschedule the last few departments, but.
Okay, but how how does it, how does a citizen get a copy of that?
Well, like I said, I I'll put it in my newsletter and just have a, you know, we can have a link on the website.
Okay. I looked recently for the town annual report, the most recent one for last July. I could not find. I could find all the other ones before, but I couldn't find this.
We're still giving her our our comments.
Not talking about last, the one that we, you know, you come out in the summer.
It's on the line.
Comes out about this time of year.
Yeah, you're talking about the one that. I'll I'll talk to to Doris and Mary about it. I didn't realize it wasn't up on the website.
They were able to print out one months ago for May before the annual town meeting. Now, why isn't that one on the, on the? No, because I was waiting for some updated. I was waiting for some updated information and, you know, here it is six months later.
We'll just have to have the posted at the website.
Great, listen, you know I have the utmost respect for you. But we gotta like mash through like it the, I feel like some of these topics are things that you, like, if you just have like a quick question, you know.
What is a quick question?
You should get on the agenda before like, we gotta like, let's, so tell me what your next thing is and we're gonna move along, my friends.
Well, I'll come back next week with the rest of.
Right, come on, what's your next thing?
That's it, I'll wait until next week.
Now, now, you have brought up something out of a meeting earlier. I about the cemetery on Blair Road.
Right.
All right, and the banking. I have not been able on that, all right, and I've had uh. I had Mr. Cooper come up and show me what he did. Under the instruction of unfortunate Rainey's gone out with. Had I known that you you were, you had your pet peeve sheet there, uh. That was all put there purposely to hold the banking back. Now, when I had Mr. Cooper up there and he explained to me what Rainey had had wanted. Because the main thing is preserving that banking. If the banking goes, there goes the cemetery. Uh, what we discussed was, and uh. I have to go out now and solicit bids on shrubbery and what we were. What I'm thinking is because we can't plant grass there because that'll wash. You know, there and from what I found from uh of various uh nurseries. There's certain plants that would hold the hill. But when I showed them the pictures that I had taken of the hill, they recommended shrubbery. That has a deep root. And uh, like our bitey or something like that, uh, another is holly. And so we figured out it's going to take about twenty five plants. To go along that banking partway up. To help hold that hill back and then that'll hide a lot of the stone that's there that was put there to hold the hill. Okay, and uh, we'll see what we come up with a, with a price.
You could, you could also uh augment what your campaign do with pachysandra and ground cover.
Yeah.
So that'll spread and hold the.
That should hold the hill, that's what they're recommending.
Yeah.
But now I have to look at a cost factor.
Yeah.
You know, and then we'll see what.
Now, is that in your budget that you submitted to the town that's going to be reviewed?
I already submitted uh a preliminary budget to the finance committee and the town. Administrator and I meet with them the twenty second. To explain the need.
So you'll have all these costs for that meeting so that it probably can get done this year.
Come in as they're supposed to, I will. But I have bids on other projects for the cemetery too, because I got a lot of cemetery stones like you had pointed out on Blair Road. That are coming apart and uh, what happened over the years. A lot of these cemetery stones, the people didn't really understand why they were put in in a certain way. And they decided that it's to keep the cemetery move, stones moving or the headstones moving. They poured concrete around them.
Yep.
And those stones are actually eight and ten feet long and. Half of it is in the ground and they were put that way so that when the earth moves them, they won't break. And then the cemetery commission would go in and dig around them, straighten them and and stack them and they'd be good for another five, ten years. Well, that wasn't done many years before my time on the cemetery. And uh, it cost us five thousand dollars to do two stones in the old cemetery. And one that was decorated for the uh. Person that was on the uh Boston Tea Party, all right? To fix his headstone paying to eighteen thousand dollars. So these are not cheap to repair.
Yeah.
And we don't have that kind of money in the cemetery budget to.
I'm gonna pause.
Pardon?
We're gonna move on.
Okay.
So we can continue this next week?
Uh, you can ask it on the agenda.
Yes.
For next week and then just give um.
No, I'm I'm asking.
The week after, next week.
Next week.
Okay, thank you, George.
You can tell me what you want to talk about and get you on.
Okay, I will. Thank you. And if you want my help with the.
Yeah.
Sound system and the YouTube and all that. I'm more than glad to do this. I've said to Chris Newvers times.
Yeah.
It, you know, again, I think it's a way to get more people involved if they watch something and they're able.
It's watching for YouTube. The boss right now on HBO. I'm not watching, are you?
But I think for the committee to get these things going.
Station uh, finance and budgets. What do you have for us, Christopher?
Yeah, um, well, really just what I just told George. So we've had, um, most of our departments have met with the finance committee. Uh, we have a few more meeting on Wednesday and then actually TJ, next week, we've rescheduled to Thursday. I hope that works for you. You were the last.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay, great. Um, so yeah, so we'll have our border health and our enterprise funds next week.
Okay.
So yeah, and then uh, hopefully by the end of the month, we'll have, you know, since we'll have all of our requests. We can start looking at some of the other aspects of the budget outside of department requests. Um, so that's where we're at with that. Um, what else is on my list here in moments? Oh, yes. Um, so I just wanted to bring this up. Um, so Eric Inscher reached out about um, an FY twenty four contract. Um, so what he was proposing is uh, an increase of six thousand dollars. So that would bring him to thirty six thousand. So it's something to consider. Uh, he's gonna come before the finance committee uh, this week, just by Zoom.
Okay.
Um, you know, so we, I think it needs to look at some options. Um, you know, there are lots of other towns that are in the same boat that we are. Um, and there's, you know, certainly. You know, Eric, obviously, I think, you know, his services are great.
Yeah.
Um, and it's just a question of, you know, is this something we want to continue paying for? Um, so we'll be, anyway, we'll be looking at, you know, options, including, you know, hiring a town accountant, um, you know, contracting. With or putting out an RP for other services, just signing off on what Eric has and moving forward.
Okay.
Um, or or some other iteration of that, so just an FYI.
Okay.
Um, really quick on grants, just wanted to update you that we, uh, Peter Wozniak, who was hired using that uh, emergency management performance grant. Do the electrical engineering on the. Generator came back, um, so he he issued a report. I can make a copy available. Um, you know, the headline to me is, uh, it was an estimate of about a hundred sixty thousand to cover it. Um, so obviously, the the select board already voted to award some amount of funding.
Yeah.
Paying for the actual generator.
Yeah.
Um, but obviously, there's a lot more. Um, so I'm going to be reaching out.
God, we were looking at like forty thousand was the total. Holy moly, how did that happen?
Probably like everything else.
Wasn't there a grant for the generator?
There was, so we we got a grant to do the electrical engineering.
Which was like ten thousand.
It wasn't even that much. It was twenty three hundred.
Okay.
And so we have a report from from Peter now. Um, but there's a lot more, obviously, that would need to be.
So we essentially have about forty two thousand set aside.
Yeah, so we need to, so again, I'm gonna reach out to uh, to Mima, see what grants are available. You know, what we can do because obviously, you know, we're just gonna be able to pay for that.
And was there any explanation for a hundred thousand dollar jump?
I, yeah, well, I don't know what the initial quote was for, I think this is actually before I came on. You know, the generator was voted. Um, but he, you know, this is based off of, you know, detailed work looking at, you know, our electrical system here. Um, what it can currently take and what we would need to be able of, um, what it would need to be upgraded to. If this was gonna be, you know, uh, an emergency facility.
So I don't think that we had initially, I know we had not initially done all of that research. We had initially looked at. I think that Chief Mother had reached out. I know that, I think, um. Tom had worked with him to get a price on a generator. I don't think the. The research was done to like see exactly the size, you know what I mean? Like, I mean, I'm sure they did some research. But it sounds like this is just more detailed and that we're getting, that's why we're hearing a different amount.
It it's still from what the, from the figures that I remember. To to this figure. I mean. I I. This is something's, to be that far off, something's definitely wrong. Now, I don't know if it's the electric system in the building or or whatever, but when it was first tossed about. You know, five or six years ago. We were looking at certain numbers and of course, with time, prices increased. We want to, and this was the last year. It was in the realm of fifty to fifty five thousand dollars.
So that, I think, discussion was just adding a second generator. This discussion is getting us up to the, the codes to be an emergency management.
That's what that also saying.
I don't know.
Here is if I just. Take a closer look at the report.
Okay.
Pull out some key findings for everyone. Um, and we can, and and you know, then after I have my conversation with Mima, we can talk about.
Okay.
What we can realistically do and and pursue in terms of grant funding.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
But no, I hear you. It's a.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hear you. I can see a jump, but not like.
Yeah.
All right, um, do you have anything else, Chris?
Uh, no, not tonight.
All right, um, actually, um, we did a interviews. Um, so we have our scores. Do we want to go over this now?
Yeah, I mean, you know, so with this, the screening committee, you know, we just asked members to say, you know, who you scored more highly in the interviews.
Okay.
Um, and then we can certainly, I can speak to the references I spoke to. And uh, you know, any other contacts.
So I'm looking at um, TJ's and mine together and they're actually, believe it or not, pretty on target with each other. Um, we both scored, um, Miss Kane higher. Um. So I'd say we should can move forward with negotiating with her.
Okay.
Sounds good. Okay. Yes, I mean, she seemed like she was really knowledgeable, um.
Yeah, and based on her comments, so um, we could make an initial offer of, I think it was twenty four hours a week.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
Um, and then I believe the initial, let me pull up the the rate we had there. Actually, you have the job description. I can, I can grab it.
I probably do digitally.
I'm just trying to remember what rate we.
This right here. Oh, wait, these are all the big. Little white goodness.
Right, and so we.
Yeah, there it is.
So, oh, well, let's see if you remember, twenty four dollars, twenty four hours. So yeah, so I'll I'll write her back, let her know we um, we're interested in her. Uh, taking the position and twenty four hours a week, twenty four dollars an hour. Um, and then, you know, obviously, that would potentially change if she were to ascend to the full treasurer collector position.
Okay.
Because there is currently in.
Do we need a motion for that?
Uh, so uh, I would make a motion to um. Move forward with negotiating the position of assistant treasurer collector with Lynn Kane.
I would interchange.
On favor?
I.
I. Motion to approve warrant fifteen for payment.
That's from a couple of weeks ago. We haven't had a meeting since January twenty sixth, so that's another one and then sixteen.
Oh, so let's do motion to review uh, to approve fifteen and sixteen for payment. For a second.
Second.
Uh, discussion. On favor?
I.
I. Okay, so we did, um, I signed this here. I'm gonna give this to you. This right here, oh, let me wait, I'll wait till we get to it. Um, we review the appreciation letter for highway department, did that, check. Um, review and act on Kevin Green.
You're reminding me tell me about these next ones. They're just um, catching up on paperwork that didn't get done.
Okay. Me being MI.
And of course, Adam is new, so it's the uh, town clerk's paperwork for Adam, was just.
Okay. Uh, so motion to um, appoint Kevin Green to finance uh, department for the term December twelve, twenty twenty two through June thirty, twenty twenty five. Second.
Second.
Discussion on favor?
I.
I. Uh, motion to appoint Adam Doby to the position of force warden for the period of February thirteenth, twenty twenty three to June thirty, twenty twenty three.
So I'm old.
Second on favor?
I.
I. Motion to appoint uh, interim fire chief Adam Doby to the position of emergency management director for period February thirteenth, twenty twenty three to June thirty, twenty twenty three.
Don't move.
Um, uh, second on favor?
I.
I, um. Motion to appoint Chief Jennifer Dubiel as emergency management for the period of August seventeen, twenty twenty two to June thirty, twenty twenty three.
Don't.
Uh, second. Thank you. I think I passed that.
Yeah. You already passed it on to me. These were all fine.
Um, I accidentally signed the ninth. Let me just, I shouldn't assign that.
She signed what?
Then January nine. Okay, I'll just let you wait it out. I don't, I won't scribble it. Um, okay, uh, what is this here? Sorry. The city town owner agreement?
Yeah, so that's, that's for another property that through that community development block grant, they'll be able to do housing rehabilitation work on.
Okay, so this is for a specific, this this address.
There should be an address.
Okay. Well, good. This is the first one, I think. They got to the stage, no?
I think it's at least the second.
Second, all right.
Yes, it's good to see it actually paying off.
Yes, that's great. All right, um, is that, is that it? Do we have anything? All right, hold on, let me get into back into my email. It kicked me out. We're so long ended. Um, these are for you to shred, Jane, that pile up.
So I can say the ones I noticed, um. So I actually need to speak with um, Adam and former chief moderator because the fire department expense is. Pretty well expended.
Okay.
Um, and I know chief monitor had mentioned wanting to do something at a special town meeting potentially.
Okay.
Um, so let me connect with him. I have to call him tomorrow morning anyway. Um, and I'll see what, you know, potentially we need to do. I mentioned it in, I think in a text to everyone on the board, but we're looking at potentially a small special town meeting. In March, uh, just a few items to take care of. Uh, the last payment on the Northland Road project.
Okay.
I had a couple other items, so it potentially includes any. Transfers needed.
For that.
Now, the part of department doors, they're all done now.
I believe so, yeah.
There were two sign packages today, so you've got three more to sign. Sorry.
Won't get writers' crap.
And then the other.
Where's my cheat sheet?
Did that for you.
I thought you guys did that. Fifty eight, this is such a special ed thing. I love it. Um, fifty eight percent ish.
Yeah, the other one obviously is utilities, um. So, um. On that, uh, Peter Lambard pointed out that actually he was comparing his, his municipal light plant electrical bill to his personal one. And he realized because we're not using a competitive supplier, we're potentially paying a bit more. And he realized because we're not using a competitive supplier, we're potentially paying a bit more than.
Hold on.
So I'm gonna do some shopping in that department, um but.
Yeah.
But ultimately, you know, we'll.
Yeah, that is a little bit high.
It's, yeah, and it's, it's uh again, something we might want to address in a special town meeting, is transferring some clients. Because there are some other accounts that are really not expended at all.
Yep.
Ask a question, please.
Fire department expenses.
Hello?
And the chief mentioned there were a couple vehicle repairs and that's why.
Yeah.
Bunch of shot.
Um, does Mark Boomsma know about his tree warden that he's at seventy two?
Yeah, I can, I can check in with him on that. I think usually he does, you know, he does a whole bunch of tree work.
Yeah.
The fall, the summer and fall, and then he has a little bit left in the spring, um but I can check and see and make sure.
So highway overtime's almost out, but I know he uses this, the ice, right?
Yeah, and I um had spoken with accounting about that because I think there was a, they needed to do a reclass. Because there was. There was a very early snowstorm in like November.
Okay.
And something got classified as overtime when it should have been snow and ice labor.
Okay.
So I think that's what's going on there, but I will check.
Okay. Yeah, because we'll have that little chunk of time that. We won't have any overtime. Uh. Council on Aging, their admin support, if that's a Skype end, then that's gonna be almost out.
It's always this, she gets, yeah, she gets money from the state, she's. And then she goes through.
It's gonna be like, which one did I used to ask Josh about every time? I changed. Uh, library expense is a little high, but I think they buy in chunks too.
Yeah, I can, I can check on the call if there's, again, if there's anything we need.
Check with the trustees.
But yeah.
Other than that, yeah, it looks okay.
Yeah.
Okay, you got anything on there?
The visiting nurse. Is that uh for visit home visits?
No, that's, that's a grant that um that Jennifer got, um so we have a nurse who comes here. Um, I think she was, I think it was initially like once a week. And so that's a, that's a a grant that she's gotten, and that's why that's mostly expended is, you know.
No, okay.
Paid for it.
All right, yeah, because I know there's uh. Uh, registered nurses working with the council on aging. That's her?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
All right. We can go home, seven thirty. Beautiful. Okay, um.
I will.
Saint Patrick's Day, where's our parade committee?